Check, check, check. Okay, it looks like we are live. Check, check, check. Check, check, check. Okay, alright. Alright friends, here we go. We got another ten minutes, nine minutes to go before this, uh, the normal craziness starts. Hope you all are doing okay. I'm just gonna take a little time and share this out to Facebook, and if I have a little bit of time, I'm gonna share something, try, I'm gonna try to share something really quickly with you. Um, stand by one second, I'm just going to be sharing the link. Sharing the link out. Alrighty. Okay. There's the first one. Alrighty. Let's share this a couple more times. Share to a page. Include original. Share. Let's share this to a page. Let's share it to Concerned Citizens of Endicott. Yes, include original. And let's include a couple of groups. And let's do Concerned Citizens of Endicott, open discussion. Let's do No Burn Broom, Oka, lalalala, open discussion. Okay, it's shared out, so I have seven minutes. Uh, actually, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna take a quick break and wait for this meeting to start. I'll be right back, friends. Okay, friends, I'm back. If I can, there I am. There I am. I don't like that transition. I wanna go back to my old transition. And let's try that again. Just turn me off. Trying to see if it's right. How about this one? We can go to... That's the one that I like. Okay. Alright, friends, so while we are waiting for this, this, uh, this livestream, I'm just gonna tell you a couple of things really quick here. And really quick, I'm just gonna say tomorrow is Election Day, uh, Tuesday, if you want to protect the village of Endicott. Uh, the two candidates, the most important race, Endicott Village Trustee, two names, Nick Burlingame and Pat Dorner, those are the two. If you wanna protect the village from unsafe, toxic, hazardous waste incinerators, those are your two guys, okay? Um, and if you can't remember the names, if you don't know the names by now, just vote straight Republican for the local race, the local... You know, you can vote whoever you want to, and other races, the most important race, Endicott Village Trustee, vote for the two Republicans. I've never voted for a Republican in my life, and I'll be sixty years old in December, okay? This is my first time ever voting for Republicans. But Republicans are the ones that are pushing back on, uh, the incinerator. They're leading. I never thought I'd say this, the Republicans are leading on an environmental issue. And the Democrats were the ones promoting this thing, from Cuomo to Donald LuPardo, Jason Garner, all the way down to the former mayor. So, that's what I wanted to say about that. Be sure to vote. This is a very important local election. Because if we can get anti-incinerator people as a majority of the board, which we will have, if we can elect Nick Burlingame and reelect Patrick Dorner, then I'm pretty sure we're gonna be able to defeat this thing. And so, very, very important. Um, I do have another quick announcement. I have one minute, but basically I got a response from the DEC that an important part of the seeker process, I always suspected this, but I just got the results back. It has to do with this thing called a coordinated review. The coordinated review is when the DEC, as lead agency, is supposed to reach out to all the different impacted agencies and basically ask them to look over, uh, this permit and, um... and see if they have any concerns, only that never happened. I'm gonna do a podcast about this whole issue and about local, uh, 5G updates uh, at some later time. But it looks like that... Okay, it looks like the meeting is starting, so... I'm just gonna get it all set up. And when I'm, there we go. It's always hard to do for some reason. Alright, it only goes that far. Let's make that all the way big. Okay, I don't hear any audio, so I do wanna check one thing. Okay.
You can hear, sorry.
Yeah, I can hear you so far.
Okay, friends. I'm gonna disappear and I'll be back at some point.
Um, I'd like to put one of our controversy beds for tonight, for now on. Uh, whether the battery company comes or not, it's not something controlled, as far as I know. They haven't sent in an application for DEC and that's their choice. Whatever they do from now on, it is up to them. We've proved we don't give into harassment, but it's time to move on to other projects. We got a lot of interesting things to talk about. Now, Cheryl and Irene, or Sher, yeah, Cheryl and Irene have stuff to say, so I'm gonna just go on my committee. Um, my focus has been on our crime prevention unit, our sub-tube, and our police reform. At Sub-Tube, we're making progress with a few out-of-town property owners. We can get them into court now for violations. Court is open, but with the governor's no eviction rule, they have no incentive to upkeep their property 'cause they can't collect rent. So it's really been, it's really been a grueling expense, uh, experience. Our new fire marshal's going through all over the codes to help them work cohesive, but when you can't make people follow the rules, it's very, very difficult. We wanted to lock down a couple of properties, and of course, we can't because we can't evict anybody. So, we just have to kinda wait until they change the rules back. Our police reform group is making a lot of progress on United Neighborhoods. We're setting up sub-cities to concentrate on each project. Our police department is emphasizing ride-alongs, and everyone here can also go on ride-along. Uh, they wanna see how the police react to the residents, and if the residents wanna talk to the person who's riding along, uh, the police will step back and let them talk in private, so people can oyster Kenyon, whether they agree or disagree with the police in private. So it's very good. You can go for one hour, you can go for the whole night, you can go during the day, whenever you want to. They're really trying to get more people to do that, to get an idea of what's going out on, out on the street. Now, to go along with that, we have our community outreach committee called Youth Trailing Back. This is for kids who have gone astray and need help back on the right path to their future. We're partnering, partnering with the community center, the UE High School Community School Coordinator, our school resource officer, and people from the community. This all came about because of a chance meeting Trustee Connectee and I had a couple months ago. We had no idea the amount of homeless we have here in the village, and that's shameful. And we must do something to help people who are less fortunate. A woman from our police reform class told me that she volunteers in the jail. These people are not just poor of money, they're poor of hope, so we're trying to offer people hope. We're already working on some real jobs that we'll talk about in the next few weeks. Our, our outreach chairwoman also really wants to have a team to help with mild domestic disputes before we send in the police, but we can't do that without more study, and we've gotta go through social services. We can't be sending, uh, your average citizen out to answer police calls. That's just not gonna work. Now, we had our Washington Avenue meeting, and we're still discussing finding our architect. We haven't decided, made a final decision on that. Hopefully, at the end of this week, we will. Now, we do a lot in the village with grants. This money is awarded to the village for specific projects and cannot be used for anything else. For example, the Washington Avenue projects and the Chugnup Trail, we're allowed just so much money for our budget road sidewalks and curbs. We have a priority list we must go by to get as much done as possible. Our speech department does a lot of that work we used to hire out for. We are not allowed to use grant money granted for specific purposes, used for something else, no matter how much of a need there is. We do not use the grant money for its intended purposes, we simply lose the grant. We have to, it's been refunded. So even though our, our roads are full of potholes and we're remodeling Washington Avenue, it's not a choice we're allowed to make. We, we aren't allowed to use it, it's just against the law. And it's very confusing, and I'm sorry. We also took a webinar with NICOM on understanding, wait a minute. Yeah, okay, understanding the village government was highly informative and gave us great guidelines on how to run a structured village business meeting, which brings us to our new meeting procedures. These are modeled after NICOM guidelines. Now, we've discussed these many times, and I have put in a lot of changes over the last few months, couple of months. That's why we had to keep changing it, but we haven't had any changes since we held it over from last month. So now, because we held it over, we have to vote on that now. So, we will go to that right now. So I would like a motion to simply...
Uh, we're, we're under mayor's announcements. We are under mayor's announcements now, and then we have committee reports, so this isn't the time for...
No, we're gonna vote on the meeting procedures first. Let me explain something. Once we vote on these meeting procedures, I will send them to Candace to have them put on our village homepage. Because I'm getting all confused on the Facebook thing, I, we're gonna put it on the homepage so that everyone...
This, this section of the agenda is media, mayor's announcements.
Yes, and now we're doing a meeting...
It's not for action.
Uh, Bob, didn't you tell me I could do this? It's on the agenda.
It, you can do it. It's kind of, it's in unusual place on the agenda. Typically, this would be later when you're, when we're looking at the, um, resolution section or, uh, old unfinished business. I mean, so it's just a matter of timing when you wanna bring that up. Typically, I don't think typically we have motions during mayor announcements.
No, we don't, but you and I discussed this, and you told me that if I brought it up now and we voted on it, that I could use these procedures for the rest of the meeting, 'cause our biggest problem has been unstructured meetings.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, because you and I had talked about this a couple of months ago.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, look, it, it's, it needs to be approved by a vote of the board. Whether you do it now or in, you know, twenty minutes from now, you know, I, I don't think it's a, a significant difference. If you're calling for a motion, I'm okay with it if you wanna do it now.
Thank you, then I am calling for a motion to approve our, uh, village meeting procedures. Second. Alright, so may I have a roll call, please, Mr. Baker?
So I have some questions on the procedures before we vote.
Um, you already answered all the questions, and now, um...
No. Linda, the, when you, when you pass a resolution, there's a first and a second, and then there's a, a place for debate and questions and answers from the board before we vote. So now there's, now is the time for question, now is the time for discussion and questions, and I do have some questions.
Okay.
On page two, under Agenda of these procedures, you have on there the, the, uh... The Agenda will be put out at twelve noon on Friday, and that the, uh, you know, put, it'll be put into the board members' mailboxes by five o'clock on Friday evening. And I think we've changed that to Wednesday, haven't we?
No, not that I know of. No, the new one, the new one is, let me read you the new one. Hold on a second. This was the new one that we did two weeks ago. Um...
Now, what are you reading now?
The new one, 'cause we'd put in there that we...
The new what?
We're putting the, the Agenda on, we're not putting it in your box, and we are putting on, on the website. I just have to find out what you...
Okay, now, I'm, I'm looking at the rules that were in our packet. Now, is there another one since then? Is there another revised rules?
I'm just looking to see if there was. I don't have it. Then I, I guess we didn't change it. I thought we had changed it.
Okay, no, because the one I have says, says that the Agenda would be ready on noon on Friday, and it would be put in our, well, adding things to the, the Agenda, I guess, would be noon on Friday, and then it would be put in our box by five o'clock on Friday.
Oh, I know. We didn't put it in our meeting procedures because we didn't change it. We didn't change anything, so... So what's on this is exactly what we have. Yes, this is right. You're right, this is right.
So, the, so the Agenda... We just changed this two weeks ago to Wednesday.
No, what we did two weeks ago was, I asked Janice if she would put a draft in, in, on Candace's website so that people could look at it, but it's only a draft, so we decided it didn't affect this, because that's just something...
Who is, who is Candace? Who is Candace?
Our media service, people, yeah. So I just asked...
Okay, now, so is the Agenda gonna be ready at noon on Friday, or is it gonna be ready at noon on Wednesday?
No, it's not gonna be ready till noon on Friday.
But a draft is gonna be put on, on the website on Wednesday?
Just, just as a, as a accommodation. It's only a draft. The actual, uh, Agenda will not be done until twelve noon on Friday.
So this is all brand-new again since two weeks ago?
No, this is the same exact one we had two weeks ago. Nothing has changed since then.
Okay, so then on the, the next question I have is, on page three, the top, the top thing says general rules of procedure.
Yes.
And it says, um... About the one, two, three, four, six lines up from the end of that paragraph. It says, "No resolution shall be acted upon and passed by the Board of Trustees at any meeting during which such resolution shall have been introduced unless you have a unanimous consent of the members of the board present that night." So, every single resolution from now on, according to this rule, every single resolution has to have a unanimous consent of the board members who are present each night. So if you don't have unanimous consent, one person can continuously hold over a resolution forever.
Can you explain that one, Bob, because that's in our law?
And I think what's, I think what's missing, let, let me, let me explain, let me explain. I think what's missing here is, I'll read it and I'll, I'll tell you which, what way it should be changed. "No resolution shall be acted upon and passed by the Board of Trustees at any meeting during which such resolution shall have first been introduced." I think that word is missing there.
Well, I'm, uh, Ted, I'm looking at chapter seventy, uh, section three in our code book, um, and it does not have the word "first" in it.
I copied it right out...
So, on thi, on this, Bob, the way this, the way they have this is that we can never pass a resolution, ever, unless we vote and have a unanimous vote each, before each resolution.
I think, yeah, Ted, I, I see the point you're making. I think the way this has been interpreted is that when a resolution is introduced, it's on, that's only done one time, when it's first presented, that's when you're introducing it. And then if it comes up again, it might come to the floor again, but it's not being introduced, because you only introduce something once. That's the way we've interpreted that section in the past.
And this is in our laws?
If that's how, if that's how that's, uh, interpreted, then I would agree with that. It would be much clearer, though, if it, if that word "first" was in there.
You're right, it would be.
How are you defining unanimous? All five? All five have to vote?
During the...
Yes?
Um, it's unanimous of the members present at the meeting, so if there's three or four members, then it would be three to zero or four to zero.
So if one trustee doesn't like a resolution when it's introduced, you could drag this on forever, or would, would it, would it come up for vote again the next meeting, or how? If one person's, uh, always gonna act on the negative side, when would a resolution ever, ever get, uh... go to the next step?
Yeah, so this is the, the layover process that we've had in the village. I don't know how long this seventy-dash-three has been in, but it's been in, you know, ever since I've become, have been village attorney.
Since I've been here.
Ever since you've been here, okay. So, the, the way this works is this, i- if a resolution is introduced, and like Ted is saying, first introduced, then any single trustee can essentially call for a layover by voting that way.
Okay.
Um, and that requires the resolution to be laid over to the next meeting. At that next meeting, that resolution comes up again, it's not being introduced.
Okay.
It's already been introduced, but it's being, you know, set forth for action.
So it has to, has to move on from that point?
Correct.
You just can't...
But that, that's another problem also, Bob, because it doesn't say, it doesn't say laid over till the next meeting. It just says, it won't be acted upon.
Right, and you know what? You're right, it could be, um, put off. I mean, that would be a motion table, really, if you wanted to put it off to a certain meeting, you know, in January, say. But that's not what this is. The, the point of this provision, the way I see it, is that if, if a trustee shouldn't be forced to act on something that they're seeing for the first time, if they want. So any trustee can say, you know what, I need a couple of weeks to look at this. We're gonna, we're gonna lay this over till the next meeting. That's the whole purpose of this.
So I would suggest we add that word "first" in there, and I would also agree that I, let me finish. And I would also agree that I won't consider that as a change, where it could be held over again. I'll just say, let's put that in there. Bring us a clean document next time with that in there, and we can still go ahead and vote on this tonight. I won't say, I won't hold it over because of that change. But I think it would be much clearer to have that word "first" in there.
We're gonna have to change the law, we're gonna...
We have to change the law, seventy-dash-three.
Oh.
To go with that.
Is this talking about resolutions that are, that are not on the agenda and they're just brought up at the...
At the first time, yes. For the first time.
That's, that's...
That's what this is talking about, yes.
That's why the unanimous board has to be, be put on the agenda. So this one, this isn't talking about a resolution that's on the agenda.
Well, the resolutions that are on the agenda, we've already talked about once, because we usually have to go through other rules anyway.
I mean, there's a lot of resolutions that are just on the agenda, and then we come to the meeting and it's the first time we're talking about it. But it hasn't, that, you know, the unanimous board, uh, vote doesn't have anything to do with that. I'm just saying, it's a little confusing saying, if you're talking about the unanimous board, that's if something is brought up during a meeting.
Yeah.
Right?
What it really, what it really means is, when it's first brought up, one person can hold it over. The first time a resolution is brought up, one person on the board can hold it over. That's what it, that's what it means, but it's very unclear and confusing the way it got worded.
We've always...
I think, I think what Anthony is saying, that we could make it say, we could make this resol, this layover provision apply to only resolutions that are not on the agenda. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but if we...
I just don't know where the unanimous, uh...
The thing is, if we put a resolution on the agenda and everybody else hasn't seen it yet, and they come to the board meeting and they see it for the first time, they should have a right to hold it over.
Yeah, 'cause except if it's on the agenda, it could be the first time.
It's not fair to not have them hold it over.
Yeah, Linda's right, I think.
Yeah, I just thought...
It could be on the agenda and still be a first time that it came up.
How oft, I mean, how often do not have a unanimous vote on a resolution?
On a minor thing like that, very seldom. You know what I mean? Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm talking about how, how are we getting it on the agenda? That's what's... How does it get on the agenda? Yeah, like, if it's on the agenda on the week, like, the Friday before, none of this applies, right?
Well, yeah, because not everybody gets their, their packet until Monday when we show up to the meeting, so they don't always know what's on it. And if they really want another week or two, I really have to let them have it. It's, it's not fair to tell somebody, well, you, you, you should've known and you have to vote. I can't do that.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we consent that we agree that this means... when a, when a mo- when a resolution is brought up, one person can hold it over. We'll consent to run it that way, and then we can change this wording to whatever we decide later, so maybe it's a little more clear.
You know what's really great? Our fire marshal is gonna start going through some of these laws for us and make them more concise, because there's a lot that aren't concise, that need extra words. And we're gonna let him go through and start, uh, systematically adding stuff. He's on a different one right now, but we could add this to his list of things he needs to go through.
Who, who's gonna?
Help. Our fire-
Who's gonna do that?
Our fire marshal.
Brian?
Yes. So, maybe we should add this, or maybe-
Well, we, we better send him a card and tell him, "Good, lots of luck", 'cause it's gonna take him ten or fifteen years, but at least he's starting on it.
Luckily, he's young.
There's thousands of you.
Better start somewhere.
So, do we all agree that, um, when a mo- when a resolution is first brought up, one person can hold it over?
Definitely.
We've always done that, yes.
Yep, we've always-
That's where, that's where it's always been. Okay, so let's go forward with this. We can't do anything now, because, um, we'd have to change the law. It would be a changing of a law to change this, so let's leave it as it is with that agreement, that, uh, that's our, our understanding of it.
Sounds like a plan. It's always been that way.
Okay, so the next, the next question I have is, um, guidelines for hearing of visitors. And I think it, and I think it would also be for hearing, uh, for public hearings, I thought, I think it would apply there. You, you mentioned in there how to, um, a person who wants to speak has to, number one, they gotta send in their topics by noon on Friday. Um, but then they also have to raise their hand, uh, to talk. Aren't, is that how you wanna do it?
Well, yeah, because sometimes Anthony has trouble finding them, so that might just help him a little easier to find. He'll announce their name, and then if they would raise their hand, he'll be able to find them.
So, then, what's left out of here is, the thing that's left out of here is people who have called in on their phone.
Then they will leave their phone number, and I will have that, um, written under the contact. And Anthony gets a list of the contact information as to, uh, all the trustees. And their phone number would be on there, and Anthony would have that, so that he could call them. That's why we-
Okay, but that, that procedure needs to be, if we're gonna do this as a written, new rules in writing, that procedure that you just said there needs to be in here.
That's only during, only when we have Zoom meetings.
It's only when we have Zoom meetings, and we do have that under our Zoom meeting code, the, the law-
That's under the, that's under, right, that's under the, um, New York State Zoom Meeting Guidelines.
These are rules that we're passing, Cheryl, tonight. And if we're going to have that as a rule, where Anthony will call on the people who are on the phone, since they don't have any way to raise their hand, it has to be in writing in this document.
Yeah.
We can't go refer to other laws all over the place.
I don't know, what do you think, Bob? What's your opinion of that?
Well, I mean, there is no New York State Zoom guideline, so-
No.
The point of these procedures are to, to make, you know, to make a seamless process. But, but Ted, I think it, I think it does address, it says that the contact information of the speaker is supposed to be given, um, by the, by the person when they submit their comment. So, um, so as long as Anthony has the contact information, he'll know to unmute that person when it's their turn to speak.
Well, I, I understand that, because we've been doing that all the time, but it just doesn't say that that's what will happen. I mean, if that's the procedure we gotta do, and these are the rules we're gonna give to the public, that they have to, um, it, not adhere to, but these are the rules that they're gonna read and know are, are the rules, we need to tell that to them. And if they call in, their name doesn't show up on there on the screen, they can't do a raised hand, there's gotta be some procedure in writing that they can see of how they will be recognized.
Well, Anthony, you've been calling-
Calling their name.
Tonight, there's five people on the list. If you don't see their picture, you call their name. And they, are you there, and if they're there, hey, come on.
I'll let you know, right now, there's-
Yeah, that's how we've been doing it, I, you know, it, it's worked out fine. The thing I, the thing I'm saying, it's not in writing here, so that when you hand this to someone in the public, they're not gonna know that that's how it works.
But it won't matter, because these are meeting procedures for the Board, and I don't think anybody who's calling in is gonna be sitting in here, uh, as a trustee unless they know what the rules are, so I don't think I'd worry about it. I'm just going to give everybody-
No, I am worried about it, because it has to do with Zoom, it has to do with the people on Zoom, and it has to do with the people that call in on their phone on Zoom. So, it, it affects them directly to know what, how this works.
Bob, does it leave any answer?
And this is a lot, this is, that part is ignored in this paragraph.
Just so I know.
Right, I mean, so, the, these procedures aren't gonna be able to cover every single, you know, uh, possible, you know-
Scenario.
Thing that might happen at any board meeting. Um, so, does it have to be on here? No, but, you know, if you wanna add something, we could add a sentence, we could try to formulate it right now, if you want. Ted, do you have a, a proposed sentence to put in there?
Uh, yeah, you might wanna reword it up, it would be something like, "People who call in on their phone on Zoom would be, um, called on in, one at a time by Anthony to see if they are the one who called in for their top, you know, mailed in for answering questions."
Well, 'cause usually what he does is he calls out the number, right?
Pardon me?
I, I think he usually calls out the, the, the phone number, don't you, Anthony?
During public hearings, not during hearings.
Oh, I got you, okay.
So, you've got the email contact, but you don't have a, do you have a phone number contact?
If someone calls in their, Cheryl, this is how it works, if somebody calls in on their phone and they have blocking on their phone, their phone number does not show. It says caller number one, or something like that. So, there's no way to know their phone number, there's no way to know who they are, there's nobody know, to know whether they're the person who has a topic on the list.
Use their phone number if they call, if they, if they call in, they use their num- if they use their phone for contact.
Yeah, for, yeah, if they call in on their phone, but they're not on their computer.
That's it, we're, that's perfect. We're gonna just say, "We will, we will, we will use provided contact information."
Yeah, right, so it's, so I just wrote-
But when they call, when you call in and your phone is blocked, you have blocking, if you have blocking on your phone and you call in, it doesn't show your phone number on the screen, on the Zoom screen.
Then that's nothing I can handle, I, I can't-
Yes, it is, I just gave you the solution.
What's that?
Because it's the same thing we've been doing all along.
What's that, what's the solution if they're blocked?
Let me tell you again. If their, if their phone has blocking on it, they call in, their, their square on the screen will say caller number one, or something like that, or caller number two, or caller number five. So, the solution is that Anthony calls on each one of them, like he's been doing, and say, "Did you have, are you one of the people that was on the list for to- who just sent in your topic?"
Okay, then we'll still put it, if you, we, we will, we, we will, we- And then that's something Anthony can do. Because there's gonna be very few of them, so I don't see why it's a big problem.
If they provide a phone number and I can't find it on here, I'll just, you know, I'd have to go through-
Sure.
Only the un- yeah, there's only one right there.
Yeah, so you can do that. We'll just put, we'll, we, we will use provided contact information. But we're not gonna hold this up for that, so that if-
But they won't, uh, Linda, let- When they call, when they give their contact information, that, having, if their phone has blocking on it, having their contact in, because you won't see their phone.
Ted, I, I don't know if I should tell you this or not, but on my phone, I can't, on my-
It doesn't matter about your phone, I'm talking about ha- uh, one-fourth of the people on the Zoom screen.
But that's okay, we'll call all, we'll ask every one of them, like you said, the ones that, who have blocked numbers, Anthony will ask them, "Are you the caller, would you like to speak?" And then they'll say their name, and they'll say, "Oh, then you are the man on my list, or you are the woman on my list, and you can speak."
So, then we have to put this, my point is, for the last ten minutes, is that that procedure needs to be put in here in writing, so people know how it works.
Well, Bob's gonna work it out.
Well, do, do you wanna add a sentence that says, "People who call into Zoom will be identified by the contact information provided by the speaker"?
I think that's true.
That's perfect.
But, well, no, it doesn't, that wouldn't work. If Anthony calls out the person's contact number on the, on their thing they called in on Friday.
I would think people would know their number, say it to me.
They, he'd-
Oh, go ahead, Ted, sorry.
Oh, he would call out the last four numbers of their phone. But how do they identify themselves?
Give me their name, have to give me their name, or they can't speak.
But it's not on the screen, Linda. Your computer's been broken since January, that's why you don't see the screen ever.
But when Pe- but when Anthony picks up the phone, he can say, "Are you Joe Smith?", and they'll either say yes or no, or they won't answer, and then he'll go to the next phone number, he'll say, "Are you Joe Smith?", and they'll say yes or no.
Yes, that's what we've been doing. We've been doing, and it's worked well, but it needs to be put in writing in this procedure here. If we're gonna have a list of procedures, we have to have a list of procedures, we just can't pull it out of thin air when it happens.
Bob's already told you.
Well, do you wanna have it all here, so we, we, you could have the sentence that I proposed before, and then after, it's, it could say, "If contact information is not provided by the speaker, the village will use reasonable efforts to identify the speaker on Zoom."
Or I would say, Anthony would call on, he's gonna have to call on each person who doesn't have a phone number showing, and say, "Are you one of the people on the top list?" That's the only way to find out which one it is. The only way you know which one it is is to ask, unmute them, I guess, unmute them and ask them, "Are you, are you one of the people that mailed in a topic?"
And, and that's what, what he does.
What he said, Ted, there wasn't that, there is not many that do not-
Cheryl.
Um, and phone numbers.
Cheryl, let me tell, say it again, it needs to be written in writing here, so people know how it works.
I get that, Ted.
Whatever we decide on, we need to have it in these rules. Whatever we decide on, it needs to be put in here, we just can't say, "Okay, let's do that one." It needs to be in writing, that's why we have three pages of, uh, detailed rules that Linda wants.
And Bob needs to answer of how to put it in there in writing.
Yeah, I think this will work out fine, I think this will, this will encompass everything we need, and it will take care of the people on the phone as they should be.
Well, it'll work out fine.
The one that Bob proposed.
And let's, okay, can we hear that again?
All right, so-
You like hearing your voice, Bob.
Hang on, I'm, I'm just finishing writing this up, um-
Page, page two.
Page two. You got Bob flustered.
All right, I got it.
But he's smiling.
We would add two sentences. The first one would say, "People who call into Zoom will be identified by the contact information provided by the speaker." If contact information is not provided by the speaker, the village will use reasonable efforts to identify the speaker on Zoom, um, by questioning unidentified speakers.
That sounds good.
And that's what you want, right, people who are not identified, and we, we want us, you want the, the, you want Anthony to question them to see if they are the person who put the comment in.
Yeah, right.
Good, okay, okay, next, are we-
Moving on, moving on.
So, now, are we adding that to this set of rules?
Only if we don't have to hold it over tonight, yes. I have no problem with it if we don't hold it over tonight. Write it in, and I will have a new thing printed up for you as soon as Bob finishes me and writes it.
Well, we have to see it before we vote on it, Linda.
Okay, well, then I say we vote on it as it is tonight. And if we wanna make changes, we'll make changes later. Because I would like to vote on it and get it over and done with, I'm tired of waiting four or five weeks, and you yelled at me for holding it up-
Well, I'm, I'm tired of you changing these rules every week.
Well, why didn't you call her during the week to have it changed?
I change it for you every week.
Let me, let me explain something, let me, let me explain something. This meeting that we're having tonight, and every meeting we've had so far this year, is an illegal meeting. We voted at the first of the year that the Board will have a, a work session before every meeting. And we've never had a work session, there's no work session before the meeting tonight, which makes this meeting illegal and invalid.
Okay, now, shall we, now, shall we go on, do we want to, uh, pass these rules, or do you want to, um, add that later on after we pass? Which is it?
You can't just make up this, this, uh, this choice, Linda. When we vote on a document, the document has to be there.
I make a motion to pass the, um, one of the colonies now, is the Village Vendicot Meeting Procedures with the addition of what, um, Attorney McCutcheon talks about putting in.
Well, that, that'll work, so you better read what he just put in, Cheryl, just so it's in the minutes.
He'll read it again, Ted.
As I said, we love hearing your voice, Bob. Would you mind reading it one more time?
It's Bob, Cheryl, you're, you're getting it mixed up.
Now, Bob's gonna read it.
Okay, so, we'll add two sentences. One will be, "People who call into Zoom will be identified by the contact information provided by the speaker." "If the contact information is not provided by the speaker, the village will use reasonable efforts to identify the speaker on Zoom by questioning the unident- the unidentified speakers."
Okay, now, may I have a second? I'll second that. Mr. Bates, would you please do a roll call, both of you?
Do a roll call? Rusty Chapman?
Yes.
Rusty Connect?
Yes.
Rusty Warner?
Yes.
Rusty Warner?
Uh, no.
Okay, now, we go on. Now, we come on to our committee report, so I'll go around the table. We have, uh, different seating arrangements today, so Cheryl, you get to be first on committee report.
Oh, okay. Um, unfortunately, we had a scheduling conflict with our police department, so we had to reschedule our, um, party meeting that will take place this Thursday, um, at ten o'clock. I also would like to, let me get my paper out, to say congratulations to the village for being approved for our first high-impact item. Um, see, it says, "This is your first approved high-impact action. Please note that in order to designate as a clean energy community, you need to complete four high-impact actions. At least two of your actions need to be completed after August first, two thousand sixteen, or indicates that this one of the actions submitted was completed to this date." So, it says, "Congratulations getting first action approved." Um, one of the things that we've, I'm working on now, and I'm almost complete, is with the, um, streetlights. Um, every, uh, we have eight and three streetlights in the village that municipal owns, and a hundred percent of them were turned over to LED lighting. So, that one is almost done as well, to get turned in. And the other one we're working on is at the fire department. Um, Chief Griswold gave me all the information that he has for, uh, the energy savings that he did by, um, uh, putting in new windows, energy-efficient double-pane hun- wing- windows, and also eliminating some windows, like the, the overhead top windows parts, that, they call them trandom windows, they took out, um, to save energy. Um, and the one after that is where I've already started working on this one as well, is the, um, changing over all of the mi- municipal-owned buildings to LED lighting. The only one that we have left that, um, working on is, we gotta have checked out, is the, um, the lower level of the library. The upper level, we know that it's LED lights, we just don't know about the lower level.
Tell everybody why in the world you're doing this?
Um, we're doing this so we can become, um, but this is so we could be designated as a, a clean energy community, and we can get a grant up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Obviously, that grant needs to be turned into more energy-saving projects. One of the ones that we're looking at, at the municipal building, is we st- need to start, um, replacing some of the windows here because of the, the heat loss, and also, we also need a new furnace, too. Here, so, the more we can do, the more money we can get, um, and-
Did you do the battery charger?
Yeah, that's passed, that's the one that we passed, that was our first one that we did. And that, we're doing these other ones now, and then we've got a couple more, um, because we also have stuff that the fire depart- I mean, no, I'm sorry, the police department did, and the court did, too, work on them, but these are the four that I'm trying to work on for the first set of money first, the first level. And then we go on to the next level, and, um, they have different levels, like bronze levels.
Congratulations, well done.
So, we're, we're getting there, and this is all done through NYSERDA. There are NYSERDA grants also available out there that we're gonna be looking into, also to help us with, um, with some, um, more energy-saving cost programs for the village. Um, also, uh, the glass recycling, I know somebody had brought up, uh, on Facebook, a concern regarding the smell, and all the re- that caught me off guard, because all the research- And all the research, it caught me off guard, because all the research that I've done, I've never read anything about a smell. So I contacted Cindy from the Endela Group, and I explained it to her, and she knew exactly which two facilities that were, I was talking about. These two facilities, one in New Jersey, they were taking in glass mixed with Murph. It's called Murph, which is glass mixed with garbage. And what we're doing is they were getting paid to take this in, and they were leaving it there to ferment and compost, causing a smell. They've, were both, were fined, and had to clean it up. And the one in New Jer, the one in New Jersey, they were fined so heavily that they ended up selling. And the one in Long Island, I think it's called At Something, Long Island, they had to clean up and change over, and only take in just plain glass from now on. And they're still being monitored by the state, but they were also fined and cleaned up. Because with our recycling, we cannot take Murph. If a company decides to come in, they can only take glass, because we only have a single-stream recycling item. And this we did on purpose, because we didn't want a tail of garbage coming to the village. So that's what that smell is. So the glasses does not smell. I also confirmed that with Cindy from Endela Group, because they also just do the single-stream glass. Also, and the, I wanna thank Joe Moody for putting us in, setting up a meeting, a meeting with Claw Industries. If you don't know, if you wanna look them up, they're a local group. They're three young men from this area. They've all grew up here, Vestal County Union. And they wanna keep their business here to do this. And what they do is they have a patent out for a machine. It's called Phantom. It's the product that they're using. And they repurpose glass. They have a whole, uh, let's see here. Because every year, 11.4 million tons of glass are produced in the United States. Over seven tons of this glass is sent to the landfill as waste glass. And only, locally, only 2,400 tons of waste glass is sent to Broom County landfill every year. 50 tons of waste glass from landfills across upstate New York alone. So they wanna, Industries capture 80% of the waste glass market due to the superior unit and economics and technology offers, diverting 5.6 million tons of glass every year. And cement, and they wanna mix it in with cement. Cement is the binding component of concrete and makes up 1/6 of concrete by weight. For every ton of cement used, one ton of CO2 is produced. If the cement industry was a country, it would be a third-largest CO2 producer in the country. Our pilot plant reduced CO2 production in Broom County by 3,000 tons per year. Every five tons of Phantom used that has a carbon savings equivalent to taking one car off the road every year. That means our pilot plant will have the same carbon savings as removing 700 cars from the roadways of Broom County every year. A full-scale Claw Industries would produce Phantom in Broom County using glass from other upstate cities. Phantom would be sold to concrete plants locally. This will have the same carbon savings as removing 10,000 cars from the roads of Broom County. Wanna look them up, they're very good. Hopefully, they'll find something and be here with their pilot program. They are looking to be here. They wanna stay local here in Broom County.
They were on Channel 12.
Yeah.
Are they, are they in business now, or what are they?
No, they're working to set up their pilot program. So what they're doing now is they're, they went through a couple of walkthroughs here on campus. And that's all I know right now, but they're working on.
Do they have a business location or anything? Or they're not, oh, they're not in business now?
They're at Kaufman right now, right?
They're at the incubator now. But they, they looked at some properties here on campus, and they're.
Which incubator?
The Binghamton Incubator, up in, was it the Kaufman place, Holly Street? They're working out of there.
Okay, isn't it true, have you talked to them?
Yes.
Yeah, she talked to them. They were on the TV on October 3rd.
We had a Zoom meeting.
Linda, you're not supposed to interrupt. We have the new rules. You're not supposed to interrupt, well, except for clearance, clarity. So the question is, aren't these, isn't it true that these three guys that wanna have this company, aren't they freshmen in college?
No, no.
What are they?
They're, one's a senior, they're engineering. One's a senior, and I think one's, two are seniors, and one's a junior.
So there's three college kids that wanna.
Ted, why don't you look up the company?
No, why don't you give us a report, Cheryl? This is your job.
That is my report.
You took on this. So I'm asking you some questions for clear, clarity. These three are three college kids that you're talking to, is that right?
I said yes, Ted.
Great, thank you.
Only one company. Whether they come, they come, they don't, but this is why we put it on the news.
You must place, you must be placing a lot of credibility in these guys. You went on TV last week talking about this company, and it's all it is, is three kids from college. I'm all for it. I'm 100% for it if it works. But we are a village with a $20 million budget, and here we are talking to three college kids and basing your big research on three college kids?
Ted?
Yes, Cheryl.
Why don't you try to get somebody? I'm trying. That's why we're going on the news, to get it out there, and that's, they heard about it. So that's what it is. We're in the process of doing it, Ted. You could do a better job, you do it.
Good job, Cheryl. Good job. You're doing good.
Let's move on. It's my time. You can answer afterwards.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I also talked to Bob Taylor from Taylor Garbage. They're looking at getting back up and running around February of 2021. This has been delayed due to, obviously, for COVID and some parts being delayed as well. A lot of that machinery is custom-made for specific use, so it does take time to also build the machinery, but the problem is getting the parts in as well. Just like everything else in this year, unfortunately, everything has been taking longer due to COVID and getting everything completed. The other thing, that people had also talked about possibly noise. What the noise level of this, they said it's no louder than anybody working in a regular machine shop. So that was one concern, too, that I had had, but that was quelled there. And that came from both the Claw Industries and also Cindy from Endela Group, who also manufactures machinery as well. And one of the things with the glass is, we do have this, when you work out, it takes time, because you gotta work out a five-point plan, which we did. We need to know how the source of the glass, which we had worked on. And how this all came about was trying to save the village taxpayers money on the recycling. When we found out about the recycling, and that 40% of our garbage and recycling was glass, we had to figure out a way to try to save money and get that out of there, and that's one of the reasons why I started looking into this. And one of the things that came about was getting contacts and talking them about expanding the Container Act to get the wine bottles and the liquor bottles out of our recycling and put them into a redemption program. Bob Taylor was telling me that the average wine bottle can weigh three pounds, and the average spirit bottle can weigh five pounds, because it's a very heavy, dense glass. So he said, and he also estimated that 40% of our weight is glass. That's why they have that separating machine that he's gonna have that separates the garbage from the glass, and it's called Clean Glass. And right now, they're shipping their glass all the way down to Philadelphia, and it's costing them a fortune in transportation fees. Same thing with an outfit, he was saying, up in Ithaca. And if this can go through, they'd be very interested in bringing their glass products here. Also, again, I gave, Jacob has been in touch with Taylor Garbage as well regarding the glass. So we have a source for it, and then the other thing that we're, there's an aftermarket for it, and the technology, obviously, is there. That's what they're doing there. And then the funding, we've also had given them some information that I had done research on some grants and some possible funding sources for them, which they're using a grant-writing group in that Coughlin Incubator as well. So I wish them luck. Let's see here. Now I lost what I was going, the train of thought here. Well, I think I have others I'll go later, but that's it for right now. I need a drink.
Okay, Eileen, do you have anything on committees?
Yeah, first and foremost, I want to welcome the three graduates from the Endicott Police Department. Three new young police officers, two men and one woman, yay. They were graduated last Friday, so I wanna welcome them if we all see them around. Wish them good wishes and thank them for coming to help the community. Holiday parade remains to be a project that is gonna be thinking outside the box. Apparently, we're gonna have some stationary structures on Washington Avenue where people will be able to drive down the avenue to see what we got going on down there. We're talking about perhaps some music on one of the trucks down there. So just trying to keep a little bit of the holiday spirit. Community, community purpose.
Yeah, outreach.
Yeah. We're still gonna continue doing the yarn bombing with a purpose. We do that the night before Thanksgiving. And we're looking for people to donate handmade scarves, mittens, to people who don't have items. Doesn't have to necessarily be handmade. We're just, we're gonna continue that and expand into Jefferski as well. These old curtains in the municipal building are being repurposed, and I think this is an awesome idea. A group of quilters are taking the old curtains, which are insulated.
Right.
And making sleeping bags, reusable bags for food pantries, and pillows for people who need such items, which I think is pretty amazing, if that be homeless people or people who are down and out. I think that's really great. The village donated the old curtains to upcycle them.
And the Rising Group has taken some of the curtains to repurpose and to give out to people who may have an apartment, and they need some type of curtain to put them up.
There's a lot of people out there.
Yep.
Lastly, the Chucknut Project is chugging right along, no.
No plan of sending it.
If you drive by Marshall Park, you'll see where that's all getting ready to be finished up. It's really exciting. It looks nice. And that's it. Just welcome to the Endicott Police Officers. Glad to have you with us.
Okay, thank you. Pat, do you have anything on committees?
Yes, I do. In our last meeting, I made a comment that I was gonna try to see a glass-crushing company by this meeting, which I did. I went to Central Recycling Co-op Incorporated in Horseheads on Thursday with my son. They gave me a tour of the facility, which is a massive place. I went and talked to their president and their general manager. I said, "The village wants to get rid of 40% of the weight of their garbage."
Glass.
Through glass, okay? I says, "If we ship you the glass, will you take it?" And he goes, "Absolutely not." They only deal with clean, something called Clean Glass, which is beer bottles, which they crush and sell to Anchor Glass, who makes new bottles for Sam Am's Beer. I asked him, "What about the so-called dirty glass?" He said, "We won't touch it." He made a comment that, "We don't take stuff that has chicken wings and garbage in it." So I said, "So you won't take the 40%?" He said, "No." He goes, "There are a couple of applications, one being backfill for highway departments, and the other is, you know, mixing it with the concrete for highways," which is what you were talking about, Cheryl. But the thing that I have a, I need to get clear is, I saw that TV article with the three guys from the incubator, and they mentioned that they were gonna take the glass from the recycling company and use it. Now, Anthony, maybe you could tell me, but if 100% of the glass goes over to Taylor or whatever, they're processing that glass still under a tonnage cost. So I'm wondering where the savings would be to the village if we give them all our glass? Where are the savings?
The savings comes from the expansion of the Container Act, to get the wine bottles and the liquor bottles out of the, and it goes through the, takes them out of our recycling and our garbage and puts it to the redemption center. That's where the big savings is coming.
Gets out of the curbside pickup, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the other ceramics or other types of glass, they would still go to the landfill or go wherever. I'm wondering where the savings is to the village. I understand the container law information, but.
That's the savings to the village.
But the crushing part, does it sound like that's gonna be?
That's not the saving part, the redemption part. What that is, is usually when you have excess glass, one of the other things you think of is, okay, this is how I thought of it, is like, okay, now if we can get that glass out of our curbside pickup, what are we gonna do with that? There, you gotta have an end product and a solution for that. So this was the solution, was a glass recycling company. I was looking at the whole picture, trying to fix the whole picture, but that's the savings, gonna be the curbside, getting it out of our curbside.
And Taylor's reconstruction, are they planning on crushing glass, too?
They're not crushing. They're going to clean it.
Okay.
They're gonna, their product, when they come out, is gonna be called what they call Clean Glass.
Okay. Okay, well, there's my little trip last Thursday. It's quite a facility. They say there's no money to be made in glass. He said he wished, if he had his wish, there'd be no glass made in this country, period. He says the money they make is in aluminum can redemption. They had bricks of cans crushed, six by six by six, three, four pallets high, just ridiculous.
In his opinion, what would things be made, what things be made out of?
Anything but glass, that's what he said. There's no, he said, "There's no, he said, "There's no money." He's making, he's breaking even with his glass crushing, because a lot of the cost for him is the, how pure it's gotta be to be remanufactured. He said, "When you twist off a bottle cap, a piece of metal will still stick to the glass." And through that recycling and crushing process, they have to have magnets in some part of the system to pull the magnet out, so that it doesn't poison people.
Yeah, 'cause there's always the, it's still free.
So it was quite an interesting visit, but I asked him twice if he'd take our glass, even if we shipped it. He said, "No, sorry about that." So I tried. And number two I've got is, I did read the report from the Municipal Electric Utilities Annual Report. Very impressive report. I read it through and through, top to bottom. And kudos to Chad and Connie Palmer. Connie got some pretty nice accolades from the auditor. Said it was a very, very good accounting of that department, and just wanted to pass that on. Okay, I'm trying to have credits, too.
Thank you. All right, Ted, do you have any committee reporters to report on?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments. On, if you, when you did your announcements, you talked about Septed and the ride-along with the police. Can you give us a little more details on what, well, I know what Septed, but I don't think the people on Zoom know. Can you kind of explain that quickly a little bit?
Sure, be glad. It's crime prevention through environmental design. What it is, is we work with the police, the code department, the fire department, every single department head now. They're all there, and our village code attorney, myself and a couple more policemen. And we go through, let's see, Wednesday is our survey appointment. We have different projects, different buildings that we have to check out. People have made a lot of complaints on them, and we go. People have made a lot of complaints on them and we go check them out to see if they're code violations, if they've had a lot of police violations. We even bring our elec, for example, our electric department will walk through these places to see if there's any electrical issues. Our engineer is there to see if there's any structure issues. And we address them and we give the landlord or the property owner a chance to fix it before we go rushing them into court. However, if we have harassed them enough and, and brought them in for their meetings and they just refuse to fix it, then when they go to court, the, uh, fire marshal tells the judge, "Judge, these people have been through SEPTED." The judge knows that these people have been given time after time after time of reprieves and they still refuse to do the job. And so that's when the judge will buy, uh, give them their violations and they're fined. We are having quite a bit of good luck because our police department now can even drive to New York City to bring up these deadbeat landlords, these absentee landlords, and bring them here to face trial. And the funny part is they have to find their own way home. So, uh, it's, it's, after, uh, Police Chief Gary said, "Every, we don't get the hint." What, what they do is they go say, "Police, police, both of these people's houses, take them out to the police station." Our guys go to the police station, put them in the car and bring them here, take them right to court. Just not generating this, um, but we're kind of going a little slow because of the new tenant landlord laws and because of the COVID and the no eviction laws. But we are getting, we're even getting a certain, um, well-known property owner from New York City is repairing his property and he's working with the police and the code department very well. We're very happy about that. Is there anything I left out?
Okay, yeah, one, I would add one thing that I imagine that I'm on that, on that committee, uh, SEPTED committee. And then the second question I had was you talked about this ride along with police. I don't think anybody on Zoom has heard of that and I've never heard of it, so can you explain what that is?
This is brand new and this is on our police reform committee, uh, the new one that we've just done a couple of months ago. Uh, this is a group of people from the, a diverse group of people from the neighborhoods that meet about twenty people, I believe it is. It's a police station, uh, twice, twice a month. And we discuss the different issues that are involved in neighborhoods, diverse problems that we might have, problems that, uh, the perception of our police is very much a topic. And so the police chief felt that if people who felt things were unfair or who simply want to know how things work when the police go to answer a call, they, how they address the people, they address, how they work, how they reach the end of, uh, a, a good conclusion, they are allowed to ride around and when the policeman gets a call, they ride right with them. Now, if it's, if it's a dangerous situation, obviously the people have to stay in the car and out of the way. But if it is not a dangerous situation, the people get out of the car with the police officer. And if they would like to talk to the person who called the police officer without the police officer there to ask them private questions, the police officer goes back to his car and they're allowed to talk to them and see, "Did, where, did you get the results you wanted? Do you feel the police treated you with respect?" It's to make everything transparent. Our police chief is trying to make everything as transparent as he possibly can. So this is another...
That's not open to the general public.
Oh, yes it is. Yes, the general...
Liability.
I don't know.
They sign a waiver.
I think, I think they have to sign a waiver, but if I'm understanding it correctly, it's open to the general public.
Oh.
So then, did, did, did Pat, did Pat choose the people for this? Or how does, how did he, how do we, how did they get on the committee?
Pat did choose the people through the, through the committee. He looked through churches and organizations like, um, ACDC, uh, Bangton University. Uh, a lot of the people are from the Drug Addiction Center. We've got a few peers from there, uh, so...
And also live in Endicott.
Pardon me?
Some of them also live in Endicott.
Oh, yeah, they all live in Endicott.
Yeah.
That's true. Um, and so he, he made up the, he tried to make it as diverse as possible. So it's pretty, it's fifty-fifty people of color.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, uh, know anything of, I'd never heard about this one. So the comments I, the, the comments for my time here was, number one, the reason I voted no on the rules was that I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of what we decided there. I'm against the whole three sheets of rules. There's kind, pretty much dictatorship-type rules against the public and against us as board members. That was my reason for voting no. The second thing is I'd also like to say congratulations and welcome to the new, uh, police officers, to the police department. And I know it's a long process for them to get trained and become an Endicott police officer. So, uh, welcome aboard to them. Uh, the, uh, as far as, uh, the process of picking an architect for the, the six million dollar project on the avenue, uh, is moving along. We met, actually, we met today and it's moving along very fast, actually. And, uh, there's still a couple more questions for the, there, there was some, some final, five finalists of the architects. Fourteen applied, we have five finalists. We still have a couple more remaining questions to ask the five finalists. And I think we may have an, um, the answers to those by the end of this week. And at the next board meeting, we probably and may be able to, uh, bring up a proposal for, uh, of which one to, to, uh, hire for the job. And then the, um, just so people know what, uh, Eileen mentioned the Chugnut Trail. Uh, if you go by Marshall Park, you'll see that they've dug a, um, trail along the edge of the park there. And that goes from, I think it's whatever that street is that turns into, uh, Edward Street, the one next to the cemetery, when you come across the bridge. It, it enters onto that street and it kind of goes, swerves through the park and ends up over at Liberty Avenue where we have the pumping station. It was a hundred thousand dollar project, we got a grant to do it. And, um, eventually, this all is a big project that started seven or eight years ago called The Big Loop. And The Big Loop is a multi-city project where they will eventually have a bike trail walking through, all the way up the south side of the river, through Vessel, BU, up to Bangton, up to the Nodson and Angle Park, and then come back down this side of the river to Endicott. And then from Endicott, it'll go down behind Round Top and up to the Glendale, Glendale Avenue Parks. And they even, uh, have some proposals, they even have some proposals in the project to extend one side of the river all the way to Owego. Of course, all of this is going to take twenty years, but this is what the, this is the master plan was seven, eight years ago. And, uh, that, uh, that's, that's it, those were things.
Okay, thank you. Uh, did you want to explain that Chugnut Trail a little bit, Eileen? You said it can't go to Glendale, that was kind of...
Yeah, the Chugnut Trail is going to end at, um, Ripon or, or at the Seventeen C intersection there. The Town of Union was not able to accommodate them, um, getting a walking bridge across the track, across the creek into Glendale Park. However, that would have been so amazing if it...
But they do have a grant, they do have a grant for a hundred and fifty to go from Ripon Park up to the Seventeen C Park, which is up there across the street from Glendale, Old IBM. They do have, that's all through the road, so that's not going to be expensive. But they do have a grant for one fifty to go from there up to the east side of Nanico Creek to where the bridge hopefully will end up being, in other words, right across this Nanico Creek from Glendale Park. So there should be a trail that goes up that side of the creek to that point. So the people in West Endicott, Weatherfield Street, June Street, Berzel, all those, they can get on that trail and then come down eventually, come down, go around Ripon Park, round Round Top, all the way to, uh, up to where the Boys Club used to be.
Yeah, and it, it completes the final leg of the Chugnut Trail in Broome County. So it's pretty cool. Long time, long time out, but...
Okay, thank you.
Still work.
Bob, do you have anything you'd like to report on tonight?
Uh, just the historic preservation law updates. Um, the board mayor asked me to, uh, prepare some updates. I'm, I'm doing that. I hope to have those prepared for the next meeting and introduced, uh, at that point in time. If not, then certainly by the first December meeting. Um, and the, the point there is to remove the, the duties from the planning boards and install them in the historic preservation.
Anthony, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
No, I'm going to pass tonight.
Gee, no money to talk about tonight.
Great.
All right, we don't have any public hearings, so how about a proposal of the minutes come on October nineteenth?
I make a motion to approve minutes from October nineteenth.
I'll second that. It's fortunate we didn't have to have...
Do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Trusty Chapman?
Yes.
Trusty Connectney?
Yes.
Trusty Dorner?
Yes.
Trusty Warner?
Yes.
All right, now we go on to bids. Yeah. This is a, uh, request from our chief, uh, wastewater operator, Phil Grayson, and from Kevin Piro for the chemicals for, for their respective department. And these bills are recommended to be awarded.
Bids, you said bills.
Bids, I'm sorry, bids. Thank you, thank you. So, so may I have a motion to accept these bids?
We have two separate ones under bids.
Do we?
The first one is for, uh, wastewater.
Clarifier?
For the primary clarifier.
Okay.
Um, just to go out the bid for that.
I'll make a motion for that, for request separated, okay? Make a motion to request Phil to go out and get bids for the primary clarifier components.
Second.
Roll call, Trusty Chapman?
Yes.
Trusty Connectney?
Yes.
Trusty Dorner?
Yes.
Trusty Warner?
Yes.
And now may I have our motion for the second one?
I'll make a motion for the Village of Endicott Water Superintendent, that's Phil and Kevin, to award, award low bids with chemicals to serve beneath its water.
Second.
Do a roll call. Chapman?
Yes.
Trusty Connectney?
Yes.
Trusty Warner? Trusty Warner?
Yes.
Make a motion for communications violation.
Dave Russey? I'll second that.
Do a roll call, Trusty Chapman?
Yep.
Trusty Connectney?
Yes.
Trusty Warner?
Yes.
Trusty Warner?
Yes.
Now we come to our communications for action. This is on our Logan Field repair.
Oh, no, that, um, oh, I thought you said we didn't have to do an action on that.
Yeah.
We do now, we're going to ask Bob. Okay.
Over here.
Yeah.
Well, we, we have to before any work is started.
So they haven't started yet.
I make a motion to, um, approve Majeska Brothers Construction for the upgrades to the Logan Field House, which is be covered under the insurance.
I'll second that.
Do a roll call, Trusty Chapman?
Yes.
Trusty Connectney?
Yes.
Trusty Dorner?
Yes.
Trusty Warner?
Yes.
Good for you, Justin. And now you get to pay the bill. Ooh, 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 I'll make a motion to pay the bills, please.
Second. Yes.
Trusty Warner?
Yes.
Trusty Warner?
Yes.
Now we come to our main business. Babe, would you please take over? We don't have, the first one's quit, so we can go on.
So the first one I have on the list is Amanda Smith.
I don't actually have anything to add, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. With all your discussion, uh, rules for visitors' hearing, um, as you know, right now, they have to put a request to speak in by noon on Friday.
You're supposed to be talking about fluoride, um, oh, no, you're supposed to be talking about recycling, Ellen. We'd like to hear your comments on recycling tonight.
Okay, so, I will, but I think you...
Okay.
Need to simplify your visitors' hearing. I think it's very, very confusing. Okay, as to recycling, is there any information on the environmental impact statement for GEO from either the DEC or, um, GEO? I think the public is interested if the, uh, the board has received any updates. We would be interested in knowing. And...
Uh, her new rules, Ellen, is that she won't answer the questions.
Well, can another...
She will, you'll, you'll get it, you'll get an answer in writing some, sometime, quote, sometime in the future.
Well...
Thank you, Ted. You know, Ellen, um, I do believe I would like to give you an answer on this because we haven't been given anything. We aren't really involved anymore, so we would have to call the DEC. I, I think it would be easier for me just to answer you, so thank you for asking that.
Why aren't you, why isn't the board involved in this?
Because now it's between, it's between the company and the DEC.
Linda, one of your, let me interrupt this, her three minutes for one second. Your new rule that you just passed tonight says no questions will be answered at this time. You've just broken your own rule.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I will, I, I do want to echo that.
Yeah, I, I'm...
Justin instituted these rules.
I'm sorry, I felt so bad for her. She, she speaks so often, I felt so bad, I wanted to help her out.
You, you don't get an exception, Linda.
I'm sorry, Ellen, I'll be quiet now.
Well, I, I love it when people talk. I think that's the root of democracy and the back and forth is very, you know, it's great. I think the residents would like if you did. And any trustee answering questions is, is terrific. The other question was, any information on the PFAS, the PFAS testing in, um, in South Korea by Sangeo? Any updates on that from the board? Yeah, I would...
Same question. Her new rule says she won't answer any questions.
Okay.
So you, I guess you've got luck at your wall there and asked the wall.
I'm sorry, I'm sure you guys can get together on this. It would be, make it a really wonderful, uh, you know, public meeting if there was that to and fro.
That's a great suggestion.
Ted, excuse me, you're not supposed to speak either, thank you very much. But thank you, Ellen, I really appreciate it.
Okay, and one last thing. Will the board introduce the need for a special permit to be attached to the recycling code? And that special permit would prohibit the use of high-temperature processes such as what is going to be used by Sangeo up to fifteen hundred degrees Fahrenheit and even higher. Um, they were even discussing a hi, a thousand degrees Celsius, which is about eighteen hundred degrees Fahrenheit. I think a number of residents would really appreciate if you would put a specific use permit, uh, you know, a ban, a prohibition on this type of activity. And, and that's basically the end of my comments.
And, uh, Ellen, I, would you follow up and make sure that you do get quo, quo, questions in writing, answers to these questions in writing?
Ted, Ted, you're done. You're done. You're not supposed to be speaking now, thank you very much. Can we mute him for stop interrupting? Um, Mr. Babe, who is next, please?
Um, next we have Nick Berlingame. Hi, Anthony, can you hear me? Yep, yep, you're good. Uh, Nick Berlingame, one seventeen, Cornell Ave. "In regards to the possible glass bottle recycling facility, I want to applaud the efforts of all involved. Whether it pans out or not, it was great initiative. I ask that you please do your due diligence and place additional protections in our zoning code before allowing them into our community. I am aware of the current protections and in my opinion, they aren't enough. I wanted to talk about the light department's electric car battery chargers. I think they are a great addition to our community. I'm not sure if the board is aware, but they aren't the only electric car battery charging stations in Endicott. My only concern is that they could possibly be harming the privately-owned electric car battery charging station because the light department is offering the electricity free of charge. And I have noticed since the light department station has been opened, I haven't seen as many cars that privately owned chargers. Uh, just something to consider. I have no personal ties to the charging station, just an observation. And lastly, if the finalized agenda isn't posted on the village website until noon on Friday, I feel you really should..." And lastly, if the finalized agenda isn't posted on the village website until noon on Friday, I feel you really should abolish the requirements for residents to write in by noon. Uh, because it does not give us an opportunity to comment on the subject matter. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Okay, thank you. Nick, now next. Is that where it is?
Uh, next we have Paul Kiner.
I'm muted. Yes, I, I see that George Fiedler is on this call and, and I hope he will give more details. But according to, um, a memo that he distributed, he has found that the PVDF, polyvinylidene difluoride, which we've talked about because it is classified by the US EPA as a PFOS, PFAS, as a PFOS. Now, I was under the impression that this PFOS, that this, um, polyvinylidene difluoride was three percent of the cathode material, which is quite substantial. But according to George, there is a chemical company that's stressing that it provides this material, PVDF, not just, but also for the anode and also for the separator. So the percentage of this PFOS in these lithium, and this will be all lithium ion batteries, batteries, would be considerably higher than I was thinking, which makes the issue of San GIL even more serious and dangerous. And let me explain and put this in the context. The purpose of the San GIL operation, this high-temperature operation, is to evaporate this polyvinylidene difluoride. Evaporate in this rotary kiln operating at six hundred degrees Celsius is to evaporate it. And after they have, in order to get the metal oxides where the value is, that's what they want, the metals, the metal oxides, okay? But to, to get those metal oxides, they evaporate this polyvinylidene difluoride, which is a PFOS, uh, to, to make it into a gas. That is followed by an after burner. Let me explain what the after burner is. It is a burner. It burns things. And after means it burns things after something else. So the batteries are heated in the kiln, and then after they are heated, the gases that come off are burned. And the gases involved will be breakdown products of PFOS, highly toxic, very difficult to burn according to the EPA, and they're experimenting on this. But notice the word burn. There are many synonyms. You can combust things. You can burn things. You can incinerate things. You can even thermally oxidize things. But it's all the same thing, burning. And unfortunately, there are people in Endicott who are still telling the public that there's no burning involved. And that no burn broom has no legitimacy, and we're just fear mongering. And I just want to establish, in order to hold that belief, you have to disbelieve the English language. You have to disbelieve the diagrams, which are clearly in the air permit application. There is burning. They are burning PFOS, and that is extremely dangerous. And we are not fear monging. Unlike certain officials, we are telling the truth.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All right. Now, let's see. We really don't have much else, except now we can go to our board members' comments. Uh, I mean, would you like to go first? Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I am good. Thank you.
All right. How about you, Ted?
I'm good too, thanks.
Okay. Uh, Ted, what kind of comments would you like to give tonight?
Yeah, sure.
I just had one comment, uh, that I've had several phone calls on this problem with the agenda. And when you put out the agenda on Wednesday like you're doing now, the agenda doesn't have hardly anything on it. It has the bills, and it has some communications from some of the various different levels of governments, other than an approval of the minutes from the last meeting. But basically, you're putting out an agenda with nothing on it for the public to look at. There's nothing under, uh, resolutions, nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business. Um, and so they, when the, when this agenda goes out on Wednesday, and then they have to send in their topics by Friday noon, they have nothing... The purpose of this was so that they would see what's on the, what's going to happen on the meeting, and they could mark down a topic that they want to speak about. But when they see in this Wednesday agenda, there is, there are no topics on there for them to see whether they want to speak on that or not. So this Wednesday agenda is actually worse than having the Friday agenda. And I still am proposing that we have the agenda done by Friday noon. Uh, if they want to put it in the, in our boxes by five o'clock Friday night, that's fine. But the public should have until Sunday night to, uh, send an email and make a, um, make a list of topic, or the topic or topics that they want to talk about. The other thing, there was another person too, Anthony, on the list of speakers tonight, Lena Bishop.
I got a note that she canceled. She didn't want to speak.
Yeah, that's appropriate because she's, I think she's Cheryl's campaign manager.
No, I don't have one.
Oh, okay. So, um, what does everyone think about changing this agenda thing where, where we can have our agenda back on Friday? The public can, um, have until Sunday night to send in an email if they want to talk.
Somebody say something.
Well, these are our leaders sitting there who are enforcing these rules upon us, and they won't make a comment.
Isn't he, isn't he the one that... When it's our turn. Are you, are you, are you done, Ted, or would you like to, um...
I'm asking you to give some comments on, um, on this idea.
I, when it's my turn to speak. I, I, I'm going to let you finish, and then, then I will go.
No, I'm just asking for someone to give comments if they have any.
Well, Ted, I'd, I would mind seeing, uh, people have the opportunity to, to call by Monday morning with me, but that's, uh, that's out of my control.
A lot for Janet.
Wait, he, he has the, he has the floor. You can't interrupt.
Administratively.
Same with Alicia.
Yeah.
Pat has the floor. You can't interrupt him. That's our new rule.
Didn't you just ask for our opinion?
Thanks for my, uh, new bodyguard. No, I did. I'm all for, uh, letting people speak even up to the time of the meeting, so I, that's my opinion, but, uh, we've been, those votes don't go anywhere, so I, uh, that's the end of my comment.
Is there anything?
No comments from the other three?
No. Is there anything else, Ted?
I'm just waiting for comments from the other three.
Well, we're not making it. Really?
Are you going to put a time limit on this for...
Yeah, I think we're going to have to, um...
No, yeah, whatever you want to do. No, I'm done with my comments.
Okay, then, then I would like to speak. I just didn't want to be interrupted, so I thought I would wait till my turn. Uh, as far as putting on the agenda, we don't have anything other than what was on Wednesday. We haven't added anything. There's nothing new on here. There is no resolutions, no unfinished business, no bus, new business, and we have not had an executive session. People did not miss a thing. The reason we're doing it the way we are is because if we have to make up a list and put it in people's boxes and stuff, or we have to collect all these information, I can't have twenty people having nothing to do all weekend but to send in a list, and then we have to get them all collected on Monday morning. That's a lot to ask, an awful lot to ask. If we were in here on Saturday, it would be great, but we're not. So, uh, so for right now, uh, we'll leave it like it is while we're on Zoom, and hopefully we can be back in the boardroom where people can come in and speak as much as they want, because that, that would be the preferred, preferred method. Now, as for, um, you said that my message, my, my, uh, rules are too long. Robert's rules had six hundred pages. You talk about...
I, I didn't say your rules are too long.
No, no, you're interrupting me. I'm sorry. Now it's my turn. It's not...
But you're telling, you're not, you're telling something that's not true.
Hey, 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 it's my turn. Now, for the Endicott meeting procedures, you said that, that it was a dictatorship, and there was three pages. Robert's rules had six hundred. I took this directly out of NICOM guidelines. I followed it almost word to word, except what I had to put in for village purposes. Village board meetings are for village business. This is for village business. Next year, if you want to change it, go right ahead. For these two months, we're going to have it structured, and we're going to have it this way. Now I would like to read something that I...
Me, me, mentioned about, um, what? What's his name? Wade said that he, that we shouldn't use Robert's rule.
Oh, yeah, Wade, we went to a webinar.
Cheryl, are you interrupting?
Yeah, she is. She's reminding me of something, thank God. Uh, we, we went on a webinar for, uh, Wade Elfran from NICOM, and he suggested we don't ever use Robert's rules because for six hundred pages, people couldn't possibly, um, meet all those restrictions. And since there's three or four different versions, people got so confused. That's why he, they made up their guidelines and asked us to try to adopt them, and that's what we did. Again, next year, if you want to change things in January, you know we can, because that's when we make up the new, the new procedures. Now I would like to read something. Um, we have a professor that we do business with. We, we have our diversity classes with. His name is Larry Harnum, and he's from Bangatton University. And he sent me this, and I just want to read it. There's no comments. I'm just simply reading it. "It truly saddens me that you and Cheryl continue to face harassment and a sense bullying because of this, those postings. There are far, far worse things happening in Broome County that both parties should be addressing. Please remember that this harassment and bullying says more about the people than it does about you and Cheryl. The fact that the men trustees would think they don't need any, have any problems..."
Oh, come on, Linda. You're not going to, you're not going to read that.
I certainly am, at, or help any addressing...
I mean, Cheryl, Cheryl's own leaders of her own party asked, demanded she resign.
You've got to listen to this. This is my turn, and you're out of order. That's enough. Now...
Okay, well, I have something to read when you're done.
No, you don't need, you already had your turn. You're done. Now...
Hey, 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 hey.
...they really did it. "They tease and pick on the two of you to deflect from themselves, which is likely one of the reasons they would not take our workshops. It takes courage to stand up to bullies. Remember your proof and growth is the fact that you actually taking classes and workshops, not because you have to. We both know you don't have to, but because you wanted to. Sometimes the best thing is to say nothing, but acknowledging this in the process of learning, you have developed relationships and friendships with people who want to change as well, and that is your gift. Our lives are being enriched by this. We're doing it for ourselves and not anyone else." And I just wanted to let you know that with Larry, Larry, uh, has had lots of problems when he lives down south. He knows the other half of the story. He knows what hardship these people have gone through, and he is opening our eyes to a lot of things we did not know, we didn't know. And so I'm just thankful that things are working out for him, and he's helping us so much, and that's...
Was this your racial seam sensitivity classes you took?
Oh, this is my diversity classes. Now, uh, now it's Cheryl's turn for her comment, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, couple issues, uh, things I would like to make comments on that, um, was not here at the last board meeting. Um, my husband had surgery, so I was with him at that time. Um, I know, uh, some, people had some questions, uh, about budgets and department heads. Uh, we all met, because of the COVID, we all met with department heads and Anthony, and we worked on the budget. So we all took turns working on the budgets. We never got the chance to get together to, uh, as a group like we normally do. We usually come in, um, on, we could, geez, we were even here on Saturday sometimes all day, and we bring department heads and meet them. We couldn't do that this year because of COVID. We all met with department heads and Anthony to work on the budget. Um, everybody had their own time to do that, and that is one of the reasons why it's nice to finally have department head in the street department that actually starts questioning things and not give us the same answers that we've always done that, and that's the way it is. Um, and so that's when we had found and questioned some of the charges that were the village was, um, paying for through the town. So, and that was the, the forty thousand dollars check to the town for construction debris. Also that, um, we've worked very hard getting the airport to zero cost to the village taxpayers. Under Mayor Palf, she wanted to close the airport, and, um, she gave us an ultimatum that we had to get it, the committee had to get it to zero cost to the village taxpayers. And we did. We worked hard, and we've worked, they've been maintaining that for almost fourteen years, so I want to, um, congratulate Gerard on that and his crew for doing that. They've done a phenomenal job of that. Um, also, um, um, let's see here, um, addressing, um, developments. People say that we haven't had any developments in the village. Um, we've had developments. We've had BAE, Lockheed Martin. We have new businesses on Washington Ave, on Main Street, in the Union District that have come here, um, other small businesses that have come here as well. Um, but that's, not, I, not everybody has a chance to bring, try to bring businesses here, or you get chased eyes for overstepping your boundaries, as trustee, as I've been told many, many times, only because I want to start implementing and doing things. Um, one of the things we also have, um, worked on as well is, um, let's see here, I got to read my own writing. It's har, terrible. You know, I, I've brought many things, um, when we're talking about the glass, I've brought many things to the board, even though it hasn't been finalized, just that it's something that we're working on, throwing out ideas. It's how, that's how we get things to grow and, and to, um, start is doing that. Um, I know that there's been mention that some people have been talking to other companies, but nobody's brought anything to the board, and our economic developer doesn't know anything about them as well. Um, we are all concerned, um, with our environment. That's one of the reasons why we're trying to do a lot of things that are green when it comes to, um, having Endicott be designated as a, a green type of destination with our, um, working with, um, NISERTA and getting our, our distinction as a green community program set up with all of that. And that's the other reason why we'd like to try to see more businesses come to Endicott that are considered green, whether it be glass recycling, battery cycling. Um, that's always good to try to repurpose things that we have already have, so we don't have to keep reventing the wheel at a higher cost and, and having them end up in our landfills. We want to try to lower our, uh, carbon footprint, to do our part to lower our carbon footprint in our area. Um, one of the things people kept saying also about, um, the, um...
Is this a campaign speech?
No. I'm making comments that I didn't get a chance to make last time when you guys did.
Just a question.
People were talking about, you know, I'm just setting some things straight. People have also been talking about, um, this petition that's gone around that they have forty-five hundred signatures. Well, this petition was online, and it went all around the world. And you, if for something that went all around the world, only have forty-five signatures...
Do you have documentation to prove that?
Um, it's, it's on your website, yes. We do...
No, do you have documentation to prove what you're saying?
We have the petition. Read the petition.
Do you have it?
The addresses.
Do you have it?
Ted, I'm talking now. You're done.
Oh.
Enough interruption. You keep yelling at other people.
I'm, I'm only inter, the rule says we can interrupt. The rule says we can interrupt for clarification.
Okay, um, some of the people that have signed these petitions are from the UK, Australia, Canada, Indonesia, you name it. Only, um, a, a small portion of them have, from Endicott itself, and some of them even outside of the village. So that is not the majority of the village that is against any battery cycling or battery manufacturing. So that's the misnomer that we have to dispel. It's not the whole village, not everybody in the village. You guys keep mentioning that. People do keep mentioning that. I'm not saying anybody...
Can you put on the website the, the petition you have with these names to prove that that's true?
You guys have it on the website already. It's on your own website.
You guys? What do you mean, you guys?
Uh, the no burn people.
I'm not involved with, I'm not a member of that.
Ted, will you be quiet and let me finish?
I'm, I'm trying to clarify what you're saying and, and have some documentation to prove it.
So Ted, the, the rules for...
So Ted, the, the rules prohibit, um, a- anyone from interrupting one of the board members while they're speaking. So I, I think we ought to let her get through her comments and, and then, I, I think you've already taken your turn, I believe. But, uh, those are the rules that are on the books, Ted.
Go ahead, Cheryl. And then, um, the other thing that the mayor had brought up about, um, the PFAS, we don't have anything, uh, heard anything from San Gil or the DEC. That's up to them. They come, they come, they don't, they don't. We need to move on. We need to look at other businesses. We've got to work with, uh, trying to get business coming, attracting to Endicott. We have, um, a viable business district, which is the industrial zone in Washington Ave. So that's what we're working on. We've been working with, um, people in the incubator. Uh, we've also been working with Joe Moody. Joe Moody's also been, um, out there working with other companies. And he's also hopefully looking at other, um, uh, companies that might be interested, whether it be glass recycling to come to the village. So hopefully we could continue working that. Um, and again, we want to work towards, um, being known as being green. Um, let's see, what else we have here? That's it. We just really need to, um, we can't keep putting our eggs all in one basket. We need to move on and try to work and try to attract other companies to come into the village. And we all need to work together in order to do that, not keep arguing and, and, uh, questioning everybody. If somebody thinks that they could do a better job, then my, then I, my hat's off to you to go ahead and try, but nobody has. And we're all trying to do our best and trying to attract new business here.
So Cheryl, I did have one question.
If anybody would, what?
I just had one question for. I just have a question for her. She mentioned, she mentioned.
Ted, enough!
She mentioned the envi, the, uh, economic developer that we have, or economic, I forgot the term, but I don't know who that is.
We'll explain it to you afterwards. We'll tell you who our economic developer is. Cheryl, would you like to continue?
Is it? I thought she was done.
It's Joe Moody. You don't know who Joe Moody is? He's been our economic developer all these years, Ted. You're on, you, you had meetings with him on the, this morning and on this Washington Avenue. You don't know who Joe Moody is?
He's the town of Union Economic.
Excuse me, I'm talking now. If anybody would like some information on Claw, I've asked that, um, I do have a pamphlet here, but also if you can go to the website and look at, um, look them up, that's interesting. Also, if you have some questions on whether it comes to, um, any of the glass recycling machinery, you can also go to the Endello Group. They manufacture that and also, um, the group that, um, now I'm getting dry again. Um, according to Bob Taylor, he used, I forget what he's, I just had on the tip of my tongue, um, the groups that he used. There is, um, another manufacturer company that, um, Bob Taylor uses also that, that, um, I think he said it's out of, um, it might even be out of like Horseheads or something that way. But they're, they're building his. So there's quite a few, um, companies out there that do manufacture these, this type of stuff and that do the separating of the equipment as well. And that's what he's going to be doing. They're going to be producing what they call glean, green gla, clean glass. Um, and right now their clean glass is be, usually being shipped down to Philadelphia. So, um, hopefully there will be, and again, um, in order, for one of the big savings is we've been working with also is the, expanding the Container Act. We had a meeting, we've got extra, uh, other, um, municipalities on board to go ahead and send that resol, copy of the resolution to their, um, uh, state and assembly representatives to go ahead and try to get that passed this year. I know the mayor has also been talking with the person in the governor's office also to see if we could try to push this through. Cause this is not just an Endicott problem. This is a New York statewide problem. Not only here, but also down in downstate, there's a big issue. We do need to get the weight and I, uh, of the, um, wine and liquor bottles out of our recycling and our garbage. Um, according to our garbage men, there is a lot of these bottles that get thrown into the garbage. They could see them poke through the bags. Cause people are lazy and they don't, they throw them out. But you start putting a 10 cent deposit on them, people will think twice and also, um, uh, want to go ahead and, and get that back and start bringing them to the redemption center. And this is twofold because not only will this, um, take the weight and help us with our cost upfront with the recycling, but you got to look at the whole picture. This is also going to bring added revenue to redemption centers. It's going to bring in business. It's going, they're going to be adding more employees also as well. So, um, that's the big picture there to help everybody and, and build. The more employees they have, hopefully the more employees that come to the Village of Endicott. It, they may be paying, like people say, they, they're not paying any rent. No, but they're not, might not be paying any rent, but as we get that here on campus booked up, then we can go back and reassess their taxes for more tax money. But also if you get 100 employees, that could be 100 families shopping in our stores, going to our restaurants, and, uh, going to our schools, buying homes in our village and becoming, um, members of our community, productive members of our community. So to me, that's a win-win to try to do that. Um, I think that's all. If so, if anybody wants to help with this, I'm more than welcome to work with anybody on that.
Eileen, it's your turn. No, 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 no.
No, you, no, she said.
No, 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 I mean adjourn.
Oh.
Like, don't make me talk. Um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Although the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Sorry, Linda, caught me off guard.
Holy cow, another crazy meeting. Another crazy, uh, Village of Endicott, big meeting. Okay, so let's talk about a couple of things here. Uh, I was chatting in the chat with, uh, History Hunting with Tom. I don't know if you're still around, Tom, but I just have a couple of, uh, updates here that I didn't really get a chance to before the beginning of the show. Um, I gotta make a couple of adjustments. And where is the right? Turn that one off. And let's add a, what does this one say? Um, V O, oh. V O E meeting, wrap up. And let's turn it on. Here's the wrap up. And, um, just gonna make a couple of additional comments. Is this the one? Let's do wrap up. Let's do, uh, um, let's do, uh, wrap up is one. Next one's going to be the, um, I'm gonna call it the builders. Update. And the next one is the. Okay. So, alrighty, let me get my headphones on so I can hear myself. Hear myself, hear myself. Alright, I can hear myself now. And I'm a little dark. I'm sorry, I'm dark. Uh, my light is in the other room. Okay, anyway, so, uh, the meeting wrap up, pretty crazy. Uh, thanks again to Ted Warner for pushing back on, uh, some of the mayor's, you know, shenanigans. Um, in terms of, you know, the constantly cha, changing of the, um, you know, these meeting rules and, uh, you know, it, they really make it impossible for the public because there's such a short window on Friday between, you know, when they publish the draft agenda. I mean, basically they, they publish the actual agenda or they get it to the village board members on the same, at the exact same time that the requests for public comment are due. And now they're going to, what? They're going to publish a draft on Wednesday? But the draft, is the draft going to have sufficient details, uh, for us to register public comment? It's basically, it's a, and it's an entire system that's designed to, uh, prevent, uh, public participation. So I'm really hoping that you all get out there. If you haven't voted already, get out there and vote and vote for, in terms of the Endicott Village Race, the Board of Trustees, there's two seats up. Um, the incumbent, uh, Pat Dorner is up for reelection. We highly recommend that you vote for Pat Dorner. Um, and then the other one is, uh, we're hoping that Nick Burlingame gets in. He's, uh, kind of against the incinerator. He's really been a part of No Burn Broom since the very early days. Um, uh, or close, maybe, you know, within, within the first month, uh, you know, he got on. He's been very active. Um, so basically the two Republicans. I've never voted for a Republican before in my life that I can remember, okay? But I'm voting for two Republicans this time. I'm voting for, uh, Pat Dorner tomorrow. Tomorrow's voting day. You gotta get out. If you haven't voted already, go to your polling place tomorrow and get in line. Get in line early, cause the lines are going to be long and there's social distancing and all this stupid stuff. Wear your mask. Um, uh, unless you want to push not wearing a mask. I think wearing masks is stupid. And I'm probably going to try to do it without wearing a mask if I possibly can, because it's not a law. There's no law that says I have to let, wear a mask. And I think that it's, uh, I think that it's, uh, you know, all this COVID stuff is, it's another way to basically prevent people from, uh, uh, public participation, all this, uh, anyway. Let's not get into all that. Builders lien update. Okay, let me give you the builders lien update. And let me see if I can find it really quick. Hi there, Tom. I see you there. Uh, alright, let me set this up. Let's put this over here. Alright, and I gotta go back to my other view. And how do I bring up? I don't want to do that one. Well, I guess I could do that. Let's do it like this, I suppose. And let's do this. Alright, so this is, so basically, I want to see if I can read this, make it bigger. So on Jan, on, on September 11th, uh, this doesn't really tell the whole story. On September 11th, 2020, the Supreme Court of New York, this is just the, the summary, okay? This is the wrap up, okay? This is the builders lien. So let me give you the, I mean, I'm trying to give you the, the background. This builders lien, the summary is San Gil had a contractor. It was like a zero dollar contract. It was just basically for the materials that they could salvage. This contractor was called M Cristo. And they're based out of, you know, somewhere near Schenectady, I think. And so they had a disagreement. San Gil's like these two shady operators and they had a fight. They had a disagreement about how much equipment. Uh, uh, there was this, uh, you know, they weren't, the, the contractor wasn't supposed to touch essential equipment, uh, that was needed, uh, for the building to basically operate, to function. And, um, they wanted a bunch of stuff that was in the electrical room. San Gil says, get out of here. You ain't having that stuff. Big fight. San Gil locked them out. Uh, the contractor put a $550,000 builders lien on here on campus. Like what? A half a million dollar builders lien is on here on campus. San Gil sued in order to get the, uh, the builders lien taken off. This is what this lawsuit is. The lawsuit wrapped up in September. I just checked it just now. I just figured this out. But it happened September 11th. The Supreme Court of New York basically threw out San Gil's request to throw out the builders lien. They said basically they don't have the jurisdiction to do that because the builders lien is on the property. It's, it's on here on campus. There's a $550,000 builders lien on here on campus. It's, it's, it's San Gil's liability, uh, before they even burned their first battery. So I'm sure here on campus doesn't have any money. It doesn't have any cash. So I'm sure here on campus is pissed off at San Gil because of San Gil's, you know, shoddy work contractors. Now here on campus has a, has a half a million dollar liability. The whole friggin facility, I don't know if it's worth a half a million dollars or not. You know, the whole complex. So I forget, somebody, somebody that I know, I shouldn't say who, but somebody I know was, we were working out how much the facility is worth. I think they said $30 million. So I'm, you know, I, you have to also look at how, you know, what liabilities they already have. So that, that half a million liability is going to get thrown into the mix with everybody else that here on campus owns. So maybe there is, you know, maybe they can get their money back. But anyway, so that's an interesting thing that this, uh, let's just, let me show you it really quick. So this is the, uh, oh, sorry about that. So we got the honorable, what's his name? Eugene D. Fawn? Fawnin, Eugene D. Fawnin, Judge Justice Presiding, New York State Supreme Court, County of Broom. It's kind of weird in New York State, the, um, the State Supreme Court is really the lowest level of court. It's the lowest level trial court or, you know, uh, contract court, uh, equity, Court of Equity. The State Supreme Court, lowest one, so. And I think they do have a, they have a combined jurisdiction. It's not, it's not strict equity, but it's getting complicated. Um, decision in order against M, uh, it's San Gil versus M Cristo. M Cristo here is the name of their demolition contractor. Okay? So basically, uh, this matter before the court is to consider the order to show cause and petition filed by San Gil MCC Americas. Make, uh, seeking to vacate and discharge the mechanic's lien filed by M Cristo. The parties appeared before the court, court for oral argument by Skype on July 9th. And after due deliberation, the, uh, uh, the court, what does it say? Sorry. The court, uh, this constitutes the court's decision in order into the matter. Here's the background, blah, blah, blah. This is on, uh, Facebook on Concerned Citizens of, of Endicott. If you're curious, you can read this whole document. But it just goes into the history and it cites the relevant legal analysis, the laws that are involved and blah, 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 blah. And, uh, basically the star down there, San Gil, um, let me try to make this bigger so I can see it this way. Hold on. Um, can I do this one? Alright, so San Gil advances no argument that the lien is invalid on its face and concedes it is not making a claim under lien law section 19. Rather, San Gil seeks to have the court determine that, uh, Cristo had no rightful claim. The court cannot make such a conclusion in a summary proceedings. It means it's got to go to trial. Instead, quote, where the validity of the underlying lien is at issue, uh, but the notice of lien is facially valid, the owner can force a foreclosure trial with the goal of vacating the lien. The owner of the property is here on campus. The, the entity that brought this lawsuit was San Gil. It was San Gil's contractor on this facility that they were going to rent that brought this action before the court. So the court kind of threw it out on a technicality. And it's like, you know, if here on campus isn't happy with this lien, here on campus can file a lawsuit and try to, that was whatever that was specific. What's it called? It's a, uh, a, uh, can force a foreclosure trial with the goal of vacating the lien. That's the proper, they want a foreclosure, here on campus has to bring a foreclosure trial, which is a completely different action than what this thing is, which was in order to show cause. So basically San Gil has not shown an entitlement. San Gil has not shown an entitlement and the relief that it seeks. Conclusion, based on the foregoing, uh, it is hereby ordered that the petition is denied and hereby dismissed. Okay? San Gil just lost a lawsuit because of a shady business deal with a Okay, Sun Giel just lost a lawsuit because of a shady business deal with a demolition contractor. And by the way, there's a lot more shady about this deal than just that. And I'm still working on FOIL requests. Some of these FOIL requests that I work on take months and months and months and months to mature. So I'm working on gathering data, but I'll tell you what I've seen so far. I'm going to give you a, it's kind of like the, the quick summary is that there's a lot of shady business related to this demolition deal. And it's going to be a greater liability on Sun Giel than just 550 million, or $550,000. Okay. Because I don't think they, I think there was hazardous materials involved. And I don't think they really, they didn't get all the right paperwork and they didn't do all the correct reporting and notices for dealing with hazardous materials, including possible asbestos exposure. All right, so let's go back to. This one, all right. So, and then the last one is the coordinated review update. All right, so I gotta get one more thing. Let me check the chat. Here, Huron can't even fix the sign that got knocked down in the street across. I know. It looks so crappy. It just looks like, it's like some kind of dystopian novel, like, you know, like where everything's kind of, you know, it's this futuristic story, but everything is, is broken and breaking down. Kind of like, was that movie, maybe like Idiocracy? Remember the scene where there's an actual building that's falling over and it's, and it's being, was tied with ropes to another, another building to keep it up? You know, there's a car that's driving on a highway and then the highway just ends and the car goes off and it lands in a pile of other. The thing is just falling over. Huron Campus is just falling over. So Huron can't even fix the sign that got, yeah, all right. So I already read that. Okay, so the last one is, let me just give you, because I need to do, I need to gather all this documentation together. I need to do a proper update on this. But let me give you just the, the, the quick update on the coordinated review. Okay, so part of the seeker process is something called the coordinated review. Now, the coordinated review, let me see if I can call up a. Okay, give me one second here, friends. And I want to call up a, hopefully, a. Endicott Battery. Endicott. Endicott. Okay, give me one second because I want to bring up some kind of a seeker diagram to help, help you kind of just visualize rather than just staring at like a, a static graphic like you're staring at right now. So. S E Q R J P G P N G GIF. I doubt it's a GIF, but let's just see if I can find some, what's the fastest way? I got two different searches going, using different techniques. Come on. Sorry about that. Date modified. Sorry for the dead air. This is live television, baby. Okay, master, county union, green path only. Okay, so here, this says coordinated review. All right. Okay. So this will work. This is going to work. Okay, let's put this one away. And put this up there. And we'll take a transition to it. All right, so basically, the coordinated review is this pink thing right here. So we got an unlisted action. A coordinated review is optional. Do you see the word option right there? Coordinated review is optional with an unlisted action. But basically, whether you have, see, what happened was. I first noticed this about a year ago, that the DEC, way back in October, I think it's October 3 of 2019, they issued this document called a Notice of Completed Application, NOCA. And in there, they said, a coordinated review has occurred. So what is a coordinated review? The coordinated review is part of the seeker process where they gather together all of the agencies that are part of the decision-making process. And they basically all do a single, a coordinated review is a single environmental review of the entire project. Otherwise, if it's an uncoordinated review, the lead agency acts like they're the sole operator, but each individual agency does their own individual environmental reviews. EAF, basically it's doing the EAF form where you classify the action, is it unlisted? Is it, so potentially all these other agencies, one of them could classify it as a type one action, which is exactly what happened. One of the involved agencies, the Village of Endicott, when they did their zoning change, they classified it a type one action. You can go look that up. I have the documents, I can prove it to you. So in the law, it says, if one of the agencies in an uncoordinated review specifies that their review is a type one action, then all the agencies have to coordinate. That's what it says. That didn't happen. That did not happen. So the lead agency, part of this whole review process, whether it's coordinated or uncoordinated, coordinated, the lead agency is supposed to identify all of these other possible agencies. You know, like there's trucking involved. So Department of Transportation, that's an obvious one. Health issues, how about Department of Health, DOH? DEC is an agency, clearly they're the lead agency. What about the Village of Endicott? What about the Village of Endicott's Planning Board? Shouldn't they be involved? What about Broom County Emergency Management? What about, what about surrounding townships? Because there might be community, it might be impacts to this facility beyond just simply the Village of Endicott. So Town of Union and Town of Vestal. So let's recap, Town of Union, Town of Vestal, Village of Endicott Planning Board, probably, Department of Health, Department of Transportation, Broom County EMS. How about the school districts? There's two school districts in the area. There's Seton Catholic and there's Union Endicott Central School District. So in February, Bob McCurdy, I think he watched my TV show because he watched my video on this because I did actually several videos where I was saying, the DEC lied. The DEC said they did this. They said they did this little pink box right here, the coordinated review. They said, yeah, we, yeah, 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 we did that, yeah. In their notice of completed application, October 3, I should check the exact date. I think it's October 3 of 2019. The DEC said, yeah, 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 we did that, we did it, yeah, yeah. So, but they didn't. Because I did all this FOIL stuff and I found no evidence that they actually did a coordinated review. There was zero evidence that they did a coordinated review. So whether Bob McCurdy heard my complaint, I sure would like to believe that somebody heard, somebody heard me, you know, because I do this work because I'm hoping to make a difference. So whether he heard me or he just figured it out on his own, he wrote a letter back in February to the DEC and he said, hey, guys, what's up with this? Why did you say you did a coordinated review? When it doesn't look like you did a coordinated review? It looks like you did nothing at all. So the DEC attorney wrote back, his name is Joe Sluzar. He used to be the Broom County Attorney. I think he's actually from Endicott. He's from around here, Joe Sluzar. He works for the, for the DEC now. And he came back and he said, oh, it was a simple typographical error. He said, when we said we did a coordinated review, what we meant to say is we did an uncoordinated review. Well, I found one document that was produced by the state of New York where it says, well, you probably, most places want to do the coordinated review anyway. If it's an option, coordinate the review anyway, because it's going to save time. It's going to save time rather than having all of these separate agencies do their own environmental review of the project. But the big problem is, there were no coordinated, there were no agencies notified. The DEC didn't notify anybody. They never, they didn't do their due diligence to locate all of these other agencies and give them a stake in the, in the decision-making process. Now, the problem with all this is, we have passed the seeker deadline for that. And this process makes it very difficult. You know, if it's, you gotta, you gotta be, a, a community activist like me has to be really on top of all this stuff and has to be doing the foils before the, before the actions are done. Because basically you have three months in order to prepare your legal defense to challenge an action at the DEC level. It's even shorter, I think it's 30 days. I think it's 30 days for, I wonder if Claudia is watching. Claudia, if you're watching this, leave in the chat, the, the deadline. Oh, that's not what I wanted, sorry about that. Okay, so, but you get the idea. There's very short deadlines. And sometimes it takes 30 days to get the documents or even longer because sometimes they stall on you. So before you know it, the deadline is passed to do a legal challenge on this stuff. The deadlines are very, very short. So there's a great unfair advantage to people in the community to actually try to get law enforcement when the DEC, when, when these state agencies like the DEC don't follow their own laws. I know a lot of people think, you know, oh, the DEC would never let something like that happen. The DEC is on top of all this stuff. But unless you have done like me and you have really followed the DEC throughout a lot of different projects all over the, all over the place. I went through this very long and rare, kind of a rare process that is, doesn't happen, it happens maybe once every 10 years when you get somewhere in the state of New York, there's an issues conference. They're very rare. But there was a two-day issues conference that I videotaped out in Horseheads. Well, where was it? The project was going to be, I think, no, no, I think it was, it was at a, at a hotel in Horseheads. That's where it was, okay? This issues conference for this LPG. Storage facility under Seneca Lake. And that was being challenged. So I've been through quite a few and there was actually a DEC review of some of the aspects of the constitution pipeline. I've been through that. There was the stink trucks that the, the leachate dumping business that Huron Campus and I3 Electronics started in 2011. I went through that whole thing. I've been through several of these processes and I know a little bit about how, how they work. And I'm just saying that it was easy, it was kind of easy for me to spot anyway, just because I have this experience that when, this whole idea of the coordinated review. So I caught him on it and I said, coordinated review hasn't been done. WTF? Bob McCurdy, the village attorney, said the same thing in his February letter to the DEC. The DEC came back and said, yeah. Oh, we, it was a typo, it was a harmless typo. We meant to say an uncoordinated review. So I foiled all of the documentation that DEC had regarding the uncoordinated review. I want to see all these other, all these other agencies acting independently. I want to see their environmental review. Where's the environmental review from the Department of Health? Where, you know, they're, they're clearly a stakeholder here. Where's the environmental review from the Broom County Emergency Management Agency? Where were they able to give comments about whether there was a disaster response plan or an emergency response plan or an evacuation plan? Where was the, where was the, the Union, Union Endicott Central School District? Where were they, where was their review? Where was the review by the Town of Vestal and the Town of Union? Didn't happen. DEC just told me, this is, let me call up the email so I can read it to you directly here. Give me one second. I'm looking for my email. And it's, DEC. Let's pop it out. Let's put it over here. So. Take this camera. Take this shot. Where's my combo shot? Give me one second. Some of the buttons in OBS are not really well laid out. I didn't want to do that. Okay, anyway, so sorry about that rough. A little rough transmission, transition there. Okay, so what do we have here? We have. So this was my FOIL request to the DEC. Let me show you, let me read to you what I wrote. I wrote, 8:30, August 30th. Regarding Sun Giel MCC Americas' application for an air state facility permit, there's the permit number. On this date, NYSDC issued the Notice of Completed Application. 10-2, I was right, 10-2, it stated, a coordinated review was performed. On February 6, Village Attorney Bob McCurdy wrote to the DEC asking about this error, among other things about, you know, why wasn't this performed? On February 27, DEC Attorney Joe Sluzar responded, as you correctly pointed out. The notice issued by DEC and the AMB described the secret process as being a coordinated review. This was a simple typographical error. You think I'm kidding? Here it is. This was a simple typographical error because the review was uncoordinated. So I said, I, this is me now talking, I am seeking electronic copies of all records relating to this uncoordinated review. And I list a bunch of them there. And this is what they came back with. Please be advised, here's their, please be advised that a diligent search of the files maintained by the DEC produced no responsive records. So there it is. We got the shaft. We got the Endicott special. And the Endicott special is basically getting the shaft. We always get the Endicott special. Uncoordinated review, no public hearings, no environmental impact statement. So I thank God that we have this big group now, this big group of people in Endicott that are fighting this thing. And I do believe there is a big group and I believe it is the majority of the town, the village, the whole area is against this thing now. Thank you, thank you, because I can't do this alone, friends. And even though I'm kind of estranged from the group No Burn Broom, not to any of my doing intentionally, you know, these loud mouths tend to take over the group. And I, I said I've seen it before. Some people that are probably listening to this know what I'm talking about. I mean, I wasn't trying to predict a bad thing. I'm just saying, this is what we have to look for in these groups. I mean, who these people really represent? Are they really, are they really, you know, they seem like they're against the facility, but maybe they're really for it. And I think some of the leadership of No Burn Broom is, let's just say questionable. So I brought this up long ago. I'm like, you gotta go watch these people because they shut me out and nobody in this, I just want to remind you of this, that nobody in this village would have any idea that there was a toxic hazardous waste incinerator coming to here, except for me, except for me. I was the one that alerted, alerted the community back in November, one year ago. November of 2019, that's when I started. Took me, I was going through a rough transition back then, okay? I actually shot the meeting with Sun Giel in September. So it took me a couple of, couple of months to put, put it all, put the information out there. But I started as hard as I could, as soon as I could. And I work in the public interest, friends. And nobody pays me. I do this all on my own. Where's the donate link button? So nobody pays me. So it always starts it over. So I'm just going to, rather than flashing it, what can I do? I can do this. Maybe I can jiggle it. Maybe I can jiggle it. So that you see This is my donate link. If you appreciate my work, friends, I really appreciate you. And I appreciate your support and your help and your generous donations in any amount. I am grateful to receive generous donations in any amount. $5, $10, $20. Whatever you think it's worth. But nobody's doing this work but me and I'm on a brand new thing right now and it's called 5G. And I've already actually Uh, have a success. And I don't want to take credit for it because, you know, I gotta thank Ted Warner for listening to me. But, uh, we got The thing tabled and it wasn't on the agenda this time around. So, uh, this master license agreement got tabled with Verizon. So right now we're on, we're a little bit on, have a timeout right now on 5G. There are human health impacts, property value impacts. Impacts to aesthetics and to birds and insects. And We have to have a community conversation about this because there's no limits. And this contract between Village of Endicott and Verizon that I looked at, this draft one Gave away our rights by contract. So I'm just, what I'm saying, you show me anybody else in Broom County that's fighting 5G. You know, and I'll, I'll buy you a cup of coffee at, uh, because I'm pretty broke right now, but I'll buy you a cup of coffee at Dunkin' Donuts. If you find one other person In Broom County that's fighting 5G and I want to join up with them. I want to join up with you. If you want to help me fight 5G, Uh, I need your help. I need your help as a volunteer and I especially I especially Could use funds right now. Hundred dollars, uh, $200. The big donations really help a lot, friends. So I bring you these meetings every time. This, there's an archive of the Village of Endicott meetings that anybody can watch. Who? This wouldn't exist if it wasn't for me. I put all of the San Gil's documents online where anybody could download it when the frigging DEC wouldn't do it. Those documents wouldn't be available if it wasn't for me. So And I got trashed, I get trashed, my name gets trashed. I get attacked by all kinds of people for, you know, all kinds of different issues. People don't like my politics. You know, I just don't think voting for, you know, I'm not the biggest Trump fan in the world. Okay. But I don't think, I don't think Trump is pure evil like these TDS Hillary Clinton Democrats that have been saying for four years, orange man bad. He's done some good things. Okay. Reasonably good things. He's pushing back on this stupid virus bullshit, this virus hoax. And go watch my video. You gotta look on BitChute because YouTube deleted it. But I did extensive research into the history of COVID and I have absolute proof That, uh, COVID is not an infectious, an infectious disease. I can state that with 100% certainty because It was never proven to say there's a disease, somebody has to prove, demonstrate proof That your suspect pathogen causes the well-defined and stable syndrome. And nobody did that. COVID is not a disease. It's fake. It's fake. So people don't like me saying that and they're like, ah, why don't you just wear a mask? Shut up and wear a mask and shut up, shut up with your privilege. I take a lot of flack. I always, I, the basis of all my work is truth and compassion and Protection, protection of the community, this community, my community, protection of the air and the water. This is what I do. If you appreciate me and you appreciate my work, I would appreciate donations in any amount. Please hit the like button before you go. Hit the like button. Tinyurl.com, there it is coming up. Tinyurl.com slash don't donate, donut, no, it's not donut. Tinyurl.com Slash donate to Bill Houston. That's my PayPal link. PayPal link. I know a lot of people are suffering right now, but there's some people that have money And I could use a little tip. If you appreciate my original environmental work, I'm doing stuff that the DEC isn't doing. I'm doing stuff that There's no Environmental organization like Sierra Club is not doing the work that I do. Nobody's doing it. So I do it as a volunteer. I'm not doing it because anybody pays me, but I have real bills. I have two years before I'm eligible for social security. Okay. Two years. I have to hang on. So I'm looking for your support, friends, you out there in the community. I'm looking for your support. I really could use your assistance right now because donations have really been dropped off. And I lost a major donor. And, uh, I think it's because of politics. So, uh, you know, I don't, I'm not a Republican. I'm not a Democrat. I'm neither one of the big parties, so I can see things a little bit more clearly. And I really don't get involved in politics. So it's very exceptional for me to ever make candidate endorsements. But I, uh, I, I voluntarily and with great admiration and Enthusiastic support, I'm asking you to get out to the polls tomorrow. Out of all the people to vote for, Vote for Ted, I'm sorry, vote for Pat Dorner and Nick Burlingame. Those are the two. Don't vote for, vote for the Republicans on Endicott Village trustee, the two Republicans that, that There's a Democrat, there's a Cheryl Chapman. You've seen how she's performed over the past year incredibly poorly. She has shut out the public, the voice of the public, and she's promoted This dangerous and toxic hazardous waste incinerator. If you want to protect this village, Pat Dorner, Patrick Dorner and Nick Burlingame. Those are the two that you need to vote for. Please vote tomorrow, Tuesday. If you haven't voted already, go vote. And I appreciate your support, friends. And I would ask that you be sure to Subscribe to my YouTube channel while I still, while I'm still on. Subscribe to my YouTube channel, uh, Bill Houston Podcast. Also subscribe, I don't have it on the card here, but also, uh, please subscribe to my BitChute channel Because anything that YouTube decides to delete, such as my recent video on the pandemic. Uh, extensive research, I even go into epidemiology 101 Because this information did not exist before I compiled it. If you appreciate my original research, my public service advocacy, advocacy for Clean air and clean water and local democracy. Uh, I would appreciate your support. Thumbs up this video. Be sure to like the video and share it. And I will talk to you next time. Bye bye.